I'd like to call to order the regular meeting for Thursday, September 6th, 2018. Like to remind everyone to silence their phones. We're gonna start. Uh, got any blue slips to speak on an item? Please bring the, uh, the blue slips up to Ms. Jessica here prior to the item coming up. And, uh... Number one, roll call. Uh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Imocation and pledge, Mr. Brain.
Thank you, sir. Let's pray. Father God, we just love you. We thank you for this day. We just thank you for all the many blessings you laid upon each and every one of our lives, Father, in this parish, this state, this country, Father. We just ask tonight that you give us wisdom and discernment on the decisions we make, Father, and that the decisions we make please you. We ask all these things in the presence of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Brain.
Thank you, sir.
Now, here we go. Roll call, Ms. Jessica, please.
Mr. Abshire?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pont?
Here.
Mr. Brain?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Farnum?
Here.
Mr. Guidry?
Here.
Mr. Gilery?
Here.
Mr. Landry is unable to attend tonight. Mr. Latour?
Here.
Mrs. Mayo?
Here.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Trimmie?
Here.
Vice President White?
Here.
And President Baer's.
Here, thank you.
Item number four, appearance by Mr. Verone Thomas, candidate for the third congressional district. Good evening, sir. Would you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Verone Thomas, 1909 Fourth Street, Lake Charles, Louisiana. And I am a candidate for Congress, Louisiana, third congressional district. I was raised here in Lake Charles by Eloina and Charles Woods. My dad was a carpenter and taught me, um, commercial and residential construction. And my mother was a principal who, uh, instilled education in me at a very young age throughout my life. Uh, 1985, I graduated from Lake Charles-Boston and joined the United States Navy. In the Navy, I was operations specialist, which specialized in tactical data systems, radar navigation, also was responsible for receiving and, um, disseminating, uh, secret information that came to the ship. Uh, I only had to answer the captain, to the captain in that capacity. Also, I was a Navy recruiter in Los Angeles. I was rookie year and recruiter year for recruiting in Zone 9, Los Angeles. After Navy, I was fortunate enough to, uh, go straight into the corporate world. I worked at Qualcomm using my communication skills from the Navy. Qualcomm, Nokia, MP3, and also, uh, worked at ExxonMobil downtown, doing some at the corporate office for a while. Um, those were some very lucrative jobs, but I did get a offer to be engineer for Tony Gwynn. He was, um, uh, San Diego Padres Hall of Famer, baseball player, if some of y'all might know him. And I was his engineer for a while, and I got a chance to engineer for acts like the Jacksons. Um, after the music business, and I've had a chance to experience the Navy and the corporate world, and also the entertainment industry, I started missing home, Louisiana, so I decided to come back home, and I realized that, um, that I had something to offer. And that's why I'm here today, to put some, uh, my ideas on the table. I'm running for Congress to bring back the prosperity that we've lost along the wayside. We cannot continue to ignore the issues that Louisiana must face in order to revive the vitality of our economy. We need policies that have longevity and a permanent perpetual effect that will benefit many generations in the future. Basically, we don't need any more Band-Aids. We need real legislative actions that are concrete, because the opulence and the results that we're looking for will not make itself available until we directly sponsor bills that will elevate all of our aspirations. And that's why it's my endeavor to put more focus and commission myself daily to put focus on the issues that affects Louisiana. And as you know right now, in Louisiana, we're ranked number 51 in just about every area you can think of. And it, and as a Louisianan, it, you know, does my, does my pride of, I want to, I want to be able to say Louisiana's number one again. So that's why I'm putting the policies on the table for education. I have a few ideas for education. I believe that we can give our students, uh, two, uh, in college, two years, college-free tuition for those who excel in their freshman and sophomore year, reward them with their junior and their senior year, college-free. Also, in healthcare, that's a big issue these days. Um, I believe that Medicare for All is the way to go, but a lot of people always say, "Well, how are we gonna afford Medicare for All, and how are we gonna afford free tuition?" Well, I believe that if we hold, uh, agencies, our agencies and the government accountable for the money and the revenues that we already receive, I believe we can afford it all. I'm not sure how many of you know about the overseas contingency fund. Well, since 2003, that was $64 billion a year put in this fund until last year, when President Trump upped it to $164 billion. You add that up from 2003 to now, that's $1.6 trillion. I, and that fund has no paper trail, no accountability, and that's just only one of the funds that's a slush fund in, in the government right now, that we can seek out and see where that money, and, and, and control where that money is going, and bring it back home from overseas and put into our education system and our Medicare system. Also, Louisiana is in a cold, rare situation. I'm not sure how many of you know, but we are literally sinking. We're losing a football field size of land every hour. Louisiana accounts for 80% of all the coast erosion in the whole country. So I believe we have to send a message to Washington saying that climate change is real. We can argue about what's causing it, whether it's, is the natural progress of the earth or if it's man-made, but we have to at least acknowledge that it is real. So I believe that Louisiana, being that we're in the Gulf, I believe we're suffering the most from what climate change is doing, because when the polar caps melt, the oceans, the sea levels rise, and that water has to go somewhere. And the Gulf is like this little fishbowl, and that's why when you, it drizzles, it floods. And we're catching the, the, the most drastic part of that climate effect, uh, that's happening in our world right now. Also, I believe that, um, that we have to, you know, even though we're number 51 in everything, not everything, almost everything, we're number one in exporting. Louisiana's number one in exporting in the whole country. So I believe we have to expand on what we're good at. And that means that we have to improve our transportation system, also improve on our infrastructure. And I believe we can do that by doing some things like, let's get rid of our ORL system. There's a new system I call the Hyperloop, and the Hyperloop is a tube where a capsule passes through that tube going max speed 750 miles an hour. So you can get from Lake Charles to New Orleans within 30 minutes. Also, that would e- e- eliminate some of the congestion that's on the streets right now. We see, every time we go somewhere, you see traffic build up in, in, uh, in our roads or with potholes in it, and, you know, we got so much problems with our infrastructure and our roads and our bridges and our labels. I know y'all know about the I-10 Bridge and the II-10 Bridge, that's something that's, uh, that we're trying to get fixed right now. But I believe if we eliminate some of that traffic congestion, I believe that we could have some time in, in order to upgrade our streets to what the future calls for when it comes to travel. So those are some of the things. Also veterans, I'm a veteran, you know, so I believe that we have to respect our veterans. I believe that we need to, uh, understand, uh, have a better understanding for our veterans when they come home. I believe, when you see the suicide rate that's going on right now, I believe it's because of depression, because when they come out, you know, you know, we're like guinea pigs in the military. You know, they test all the new technology on the military. And then when we come out, we're, we're, we're overqualified in a lot of situations, and we can't find a job that really understands our training. So we need to make sure that we set up a system where we could, uh, parallel the education that was given in the military and the training military to what's happening in the civilian world, so that way we could, uh, employ more of our veterans, and we can stop seeing so much of the depression and the suicide rate that's going on. You know, so, uh, November 6th is gonna be one of the most important elections that we've, midterm election that we've had in a long time, so I, so I encourage you to get out there and tell your friends, your families, your neighbors to go out and vote and support unanimous decision law. You know, I, I support that. We're the only two states in the, in the nation that has unanimous decision law, where 10 out of the 12 jury can convict somebody. I think it's time to really, uh, get rid of that and stay in line with what the rest of the states are doing and what the rest of the world is doing. Uh, so, November 6th, 2018, Thomas for Congress, stand with the big man, and I promise I will stand with you.
Thank you, Senator. Item number five, presentation of certificates to the players and coaches of the South Lake Charles Little League team in recognition of winning the 2018 State Baseball Championship. Mr. Guidry and Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was asked by Mr. Landry to stand in. He had a very important engagement tonight that he had to be at, and one of the things that I just wanna say to you guys out there is that, congratulations, and this is the beginning of a bright, bright future for a lot of you. Just remember, all the baseball players that you see playing in the major league right now, guess where those guys started from? Right there where you're at. So, understand that you've got a huge task in front of you, but with the momentum that you guys have built up to this point, I think a lot of you are gonna be really successful in the future. And let me just say to the parents, hats off to you for doing what you do and the sacrifices that you guys make for these kids, because traveling all over the country, playing select baseball, parents, I know, that's not easy. And the financial stress that it sometimes puts on a family. And those are the sacrifices that you're making to make sure that these little young men can get the best opportunity that they can to have a bright future. And I'm the only one standing up here between Hal and myself that's ever played sports, so listen more to what I say, guys, because I know what I'm talking about, okay? But I just wanna say also, there's another juror that represents a lot of you guys and the families, Mr. Guy Brain. Guy, raise your hand. Guy lives in a lot of you guys' districts, and he just wanted me to say that, how proud he is of you guys. And congratulations, guys. Wow, what a ride. Can I just ask one thing? Did you guys check the birth certificate? You guys played Mexico, am I correct? Who was, who was the team you played that was green?
Yes.
Yes. How can a kid be 12 years old and 6'6"? Do y'all know what I'm talkin', was he really 6'6"? He was tall, wasn't he? Okay, but you guys stood up to him, and that's what I, I wanna say. You guys didn't back down at all. So guys, again, congratulations, and here's Mr. Hal McMillan.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanna talk about humbleness. Humbleness is something that you should always have in life, and I just wanna say that sometimes there's some people that are not so humble. Hey, guys, I'm thrilled to be here, just a moment in time to say thank you for what you've done for the Calqueshoe Parish and the state of Louisiana. Uh, I was picked on an All-Star team when I was your age. I did play baseball, that was my sport, and it was a thrill to do it. And I still have buddies of mine that were teammates and still great friends. You'll be great friends throughout this experience. Nobody can ever take away what you've done, and winning a state championship title is a really big deal. And we're very proud of y'all, very proud of South Lake Charles. You may not, uh, win as far as you wanted to go in the Little League World Series, but we, we never, we never at any point in time thought less about the greatness of this team. Baseball is a game of inches. You know, when you have a no-hitter and you lose a game, that's a tough break. That's a real tough break. Uh, so we're really thrilled to be here, and we're gonna honor you with a certificate, and we're gonna call your names out here, we're gonna get you to come up with the coaches, and then we're gonna go up here, we're gonna take a picture. But thank you. I want everybody to give these guys a real big hand for what they've done. God bless them. Manager Jared Fusler, if you'd come on up. We're gonna start with the manager. We're gonna ask you if you wanna say a few words, go ahead.
You want me to go behind him? Yeah. Hey, I wanna thank the committee first of all. Uh, I'm gonna use you guys as an avenue, just as community support was unbelievable for these kids and these parents. Really helped out a lot. These kids, just like you said, uh, Mr. Hal, these kids are gonna remember this for the rest of their life. Big deal, big deal. Really proud of you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Adam Gory. Adam here. Dan Knox, Coach Dan Knox, right here. And Ross Callahan. Y'all give him a hand when he come up here. Congratulations.
Good job.
Dane Dixon.
He looks a little bit, little bit like Alex Breton, doesn't he?
Good job, man.
Grant Matthew.
Good job, buddy.
He's a good job.
Great job.
Mr. McMillan, Grant wanted to know if y'all was gonna play highlighters?
Yeah, we wanna highlight. Do we have any highlights?
We're all in being highlights. Diego Forellos. Now batting number 11, Diego Forellos. Great job, man. Grant Frey.
Congratulations.
Don't put yourself out, man.
It's a good number.
Boy, congratulations.
Miles Willdo.
Good job, buddy.
Landon Victorian.
Good job.
Good job.
He's a bell arm.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job, buddy.
Landon Victorian.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Good job.
Lisa Bellard.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Ricky Perron.
Good job.
Good job, man.
Good job, buddy.
Good job, buddy.
Good job, man.
Good job, buddy.
Good job, man.
Good job, buddy.
Good job, buddy.
Good job, man.
Good job, man.
Good job, man.
Good job, buddy.
Good job, buddy.
Good job, man.
Rick A. Mayor.
Good job, man.
Good job, Rick.
Good job, buddy.
Take two.
Come on up, y'all, and let's take a picture.
Let me just say one comment. All the kids that we called out showed up here tonight. There's a lot of times when we have teams that we actually, um, do this for, a lot of them can't make it, for whatever reasons, but this is the commitment that I've seen not only with the coaching staff, but with the parents, to have each of those kids here tonight. That's what I'm talking about. Great job, parents and coaches.
Make sure, 'cause everybody swings this. All right, y'all, on three.
Smile be, guys, gonna, gonna, here's your bear compress.
One, two, three, I'm gonna take two more. Okay, one, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Kevin, you're so, you're so...
Yeah, good job.
Yeah, I have a T-ball player.
Always have a last one.
This is gonna be good.
Can you call him?
Item number six, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane?
Mr. President, we have two applications before you tonight. We recommend they be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. Got a motion by Mr. Guidry and a second by Mr. Farnum. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item seven, consideration of approving payment of all current invoices. Second. Got a motion by Mr. Gilery and a second by Mr. White. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item nine, consideration of approving the public works, uh, excuse me, eight, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated August 2nd, 2018. Got a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. White. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Consideration of approving the Public Works Committee report dated August 30th, 2018. Mr. Brain?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, uh, we'll go to item A, recommended approving an amendment to the professional service contract for the Roswell Bridge replacement project. B, recommended approving an amendment to the professional services contract for the Cabela Road Bridge replacement project. C, recommended approving active sale agreement for the Carlos Drive Extension Phase 2 project. D, recommended approving an active sale agreement for the Carlos Drive Extension Phase 2 project. E, recommended approving an active sale agreement for the Hamley Road Extension project. F, recommended approving utilities and drainage services agreements for the Johnny Bro Road Extension project. G, recommended approving an active sale agreement for the Johnny Bro Road Extension project. H, recommended approving professional environmental consulting contracts for the Calqueshoe Parish Transportation Initiative Program. One, CH Finstermaker and Associates for the LA 27 Lewis Street to High Hope Road Project. Two, Providence Engineering and Design for the LA 384 Country Club Road Project. TerraCon Consultants Incorporated for the Louisiana 1256 Patton Street to Dave Dugas Road Project. I recommended approving the parish participation in the federal off-system bridge rehabilitation and replacement program. J, recommended approving an amendment to the professional services consulting contract for the real-time forecasting system developed, developed on the Contraband Bayou watershed. K, recommended adopting a resolution naming a new public road connecting Bessie Daniels Road to Charlie's Daniel Loop in Ward 5 as railroad bypass. L, recommended authorize, authorizing the director of public works to advertise for the improvements to the elevated water storage tank for Waterworks District Number 2 of Ward 4 project. M, recommended accepting the following projects as substantially complete. One, River Road Bridge Replacement Project in Calqueshoe Parish, Ward 8. Two, overlaying of various roads in Calqueshoe Parish, Ward 8. That's the end of my report, Mr. President, and I move to accept it.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Brain. Mr. Brain makes a motion to accept report. Mr. White seconds. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Consideration of approving the Agenda Committee Report dated August 30th, 2018. I've got a motion by Ms. Mayo and a second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item 11, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a cooperative endeavor agreement between the police jury and the Southwest Louisiana Convention and Visitors Bureau for the collection and distribution of proceeds from the 1% hotel and motel sales tax to be levied in Calqueshoe Parish. I have a motion by Ms. Trimmie and a second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item 12, consideration of adopting an ordinance authorizing the purchase of property located at 508 South Kent Drive, Sulphur, through funding received from the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Got a motion to accept, I mean, excuse me, a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Thirteen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the following requests.
Move on 13, all books.
A, authorizing the submittal of Community Water Enrichment Fund, CWEF, grant applications on behalf of special service districts. B, execution of agreements with the Louisiana Office of Community Development for said grant awards, and C, execution for sub-recipient agreements with said special service districts. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Guidry. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Fourteen, consideration of adopting ordinances rescinding the following ordinances with reference to adjudicated property sales. A, ordinance number 6939, and B, ordinance number 6935. I've got a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Farnum. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Fifteen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the submittal of an application slash sponsor agreement for the Family Daycare Home Food Program. I've got a motion by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. White. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Sixteen, consideration of authorizing the parish purchasing agency to advertise for bids for two cab and chassis trucks with mounted roadside sprayer system. Got a motion by Mr. Latour, second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Seventeen, take appropriate action on the following bids and/or proposals. A, sign face. The staff recommends the low-responsive bid of Vulcan Incorporated DBA Vulcan Signs be accepted. B, solid waste collection and disposal for Calqueshoe Parish Police Jury Facilities. Staff recommends the proposal of waste management of Louisiana LLC be accepted. C, animal shelter software. Staff recommends that the proposal of HLP Incorporated slash Chameleon Software Products be accepted. D, Calqueshoe Parish Project Number 2018 dash 05. Parish engineer recommends that the low bid in the amount of $2,64,687 of Prairie Contractors LLC be accepted. E, Crush Stone, the staff recommends the low-responsive bids of APEC Aggregate Supply LLC, DP Aggregate LLC, and Port Aggregates Incorporated be accepted.
Still move.
Hot Mix. The staff recommends the low-responsive bid of RE Height Construction Company LLC be accepted. Ready Mix Concrete, the staff recommends the low-responsive bids of Dunham Price LLC and PAI Ready Mix LLC be accepted. F, metal signposts. The staff recommends the low-responsive bid of Vulcan Incorporated DBA Vulcan Signs be accepted. Weed Control Chemicals, the staff recommends the low-responsive bids of Helena Agri Enterprises LLC and VM Distribution Partners Division of Asplund Tree Expert be accepted. G, Calqueshoe Parish Project Number 2018 dash 08. The parish engineer recommends that the low bid in the amount of $1,562,727.85 of 5S Group Incorporated be accepted. Mr. Farnum? Mr. Farnum made a motion, and Mr. Collins seconded. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you. I'd like to go back to item B on that, on the solid waste collection disposal for Calqueshoe Parish. Uh, staff, uh, if you don't mind, Mr. President, how long is that for? How many, what, how long of agreement did we sign? How many, what, uh, how long of agreement do we sign?
Mary Flavens here, she can answer that.
I was just wondering, is it three years, five years, what do we sign?
We have an answer, I just.
Teresa Chanpo, Assistant Director of Public Works. Um, that contract is a one-year contract with five, or four additional one-year options.
Good, thank you. That's what I wanted to, uh, I'd just like to say that the service that I get in my community, in my district, from waste management is first-class. Uh, I can tell you that Dominique DiPaolo is one phone call away, if you don't have his number, y'all need Dom's number. Whether I have a constituent who needs a trash can or if they got a skip or if something happened and they got it out late, I've had him go back and, and pick up trash cans for us. And I think sometimes the people in the community don't know to call the police jurors when there's a problem with waste management. But if there is, I ask them to call me directly, because I can call Dominique and I can get their problem solved. I really appreciate what Frank, Beverly, and now Donald and their staff does for Calcasieu Parish. It's a, uh, in the, in the districts that have waste management, it works real well. So don't fix anything that's not broke. And plus, our solid waste, uh, disposal areas are really good and I think they help cut down on the litter in our, in our parish also. So, uh, thank you, Mr. President, I yield the floor.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Mr. Latour.
Yeah, I'd just like to recuse myself from B. Yes, okay, and Mr. Scott.
I think I might know the answer to this, but normally we do a three and five-year contracts, why are we doing one year? Is it because it's hard to keep track of how much trash is coming in there each year and we have to negotiate? Would that be a?
I'm gonna take a guess, that's probably right, but, um, that's really, the contracting part of it is out of, more of out of the realm that I deal with, um, if, I'm not sure if Kelly wants to step up and give a more complete answer if that'll, if that is more or, or Mary. We handle the administration of the contract, we don't necessarily do the negotiation on the contract end as far as terms and that's.
Maybe Mr. Wayne White can tell me, are we getting more trash every year?
Oh, that's definitely a yes, there's no doubt about that.
So it's probably worth negotiating every year.
There's no doubt about the fact that it grows every year.
All right, I'll take that as an answer, thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Farmham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, uh, also thank, uh, Frank and, and Ms. Barbara and their team. Most of the time when, every time when I call, that garbage is gone before the sun goes down that same day. It's a, it's an instantaneous response, there's not an excuse on the other end of the phone line. It's, it's, we got, we're gonna take care of this for you people. So, uh, thank y'all for everything y'all do, y'all run an outstanding service.
Mr. President.
Go ahead, Ms. Trimmie.
Thank you. Uh, we've had a lot of issues, wonderful, I mean, we don't have very many problems. But one of the last problems I've had is the only time I've ever had this problem. Uh, the man lives out there on, uh, Arthur Urban Road and he called me and bottom line is, he put his trash out and when he went back, there was no trash can. So, the truck ate the can. So I called Beverly and by that, by late that evening, a new trash can was delivered to the gentleman. So that, I don't know how many people have actually had one just eaten and gone away. So it was a pretty, uh, I must kinda, everybody kinda laughed about it, but the bottom line is, we got a new can. Thank you, Beverly, thank you, Frank.
Great news, great news. Mr. White.
I, I also wanna echo, uh, what the rest of the jurors says. I have Ms. Beverly's number on speed dial, 'cause I have quite a bit of issues that arise in Moss Bluff from, uh, different issues, but y'all always take care of it and I wanna thank y'all very much for all the help y'all give us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Any further discussion? Any objection? All of that carries. Item eighteen, take appropriate action on the terms of the following members of various boards and districts. A, Waterworks District Number One of Ward One. Got a motion to reappoint Ms. Donna DeBarge by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. B, Waterworks District Number Four of Ward Four. Got a motion to reappoint Mr. O.L. Johnson by Mr. McMillan and a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. D, uh, excuse me, C, Waterworks District Number Eleven of Ward Four.
Second.
Of seven, got a motion to reappoint Mr. Mike Guidry by Mr. Francis Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Abshire. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. D, Ward One Fire Protection District.
Move to reappoint Ms. Sue Spicer and Mr. Gary Brown.
Got a motion to reappoint Ms. Sue Spicer and Mr. Gary L. Brown by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Gilery. Uh, Mr. Latour, excuse me. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. E, Ward Seven Fire Protection District Number One. Got a motion to reappoint Mr. Harold Pickett Junior and Mr. Kent Ledoux by Mr. Farmham and a second by Ms. Trimmie. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. F, Ward One Economic Development Board, got a motion.
Move to reappoint Mr. Michelle McKinnis.
Got a motion to reappoint Ms. Michelle McKinnis by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. G, Waterworks District Number Twelve of Ward Three.
Defer till end of the month, I don't have a name.
Let's, let's, let's go thirty days on that. Let's defer, uh, Mr., got a motion to defer for thirty days by Mr. Brain. Got a motion by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion?
I do this one, Mr. President, District Seven, what is that on there for, just, you know? Why that's on there?
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Any further discussion? Any objection? Item carries. H, Southwest Louisiana Convention and Visitors Bureau. Got a motion to appoint Mr. Alan Trantina by Mr. McMillan, second by Ms. Trimmie. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Uh, item nineteen is, uh, advise items. Item twenty.